Okay, it is six o'clock, so we'll call our meeting to order, and then again, I present the Pledge of Allegiance. Please all rise.
Our allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you very much. So, a new role has been taken.
Yes.
Next up is our consent agenda, and Commissioners may remove any single item from the end. Oh, minutes, I'm sorry, I scrolled down too quickly. We entertain a motion for approval of the December eleventh, two thousand eighteen minutes. Support, motion support, are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Now moving to our consent agenda.
That would be the phone. Stop it.
You want to take this?
No, it's one of those calls, one of those calls of choosing a local number or a company.
Yeah, makes it look like it.
Tell me my credit card.
Okay, so, let's start our consent agenda. Commissioners may remove any individual item from the resolution, or you may remove, or you may approve all of the items in the consent agenda under one motion. So, what is your pleasure? I probably should tell you what's under here, for the purpose of the public. First is request for payment amount of five thousand five hundred dollars to the state of Michigan for the annual NPDES permit fee for two thousand nineteen for discharges at the wastewater treatment plant. Second item is request for payment amount of two thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and twelve cents to the state of Michigan for the annual biosalids land application fee for two thousand nineteen for the reported tonnage of two thousand eighteen by the wastewater treatment plant. And the third and final item is request for payment amount of six thousand dollars to the Graciate Isabella Regional School District for the MMNet internet services for the period of July one, two thousand eighteen to June thirty, two thousand nineteen by the Alma Public Library. Those three items, your pleasure.
Well, thank you.
Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Request for purchase, we have five. First up is request for purchase, the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars to Eta Supply for forty-five eighths by three-quarter inch residential meters to restock the Alma Water Plant inventory. Your pleasure.
Support.
Motion is support, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Item two is request for purchase, the amount of one thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-one cents to ASAP Sales and Service for the snowplow frame and hardware to equip the new car. Motion is support, anybody hear any questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Item three is request for purchase, the amount of one thousand seven hundred dollars to ESRI for the ARC GIS Annual Software Maintenance Renewal for the Engineering Department. Approval.
Support.
Got motion support, any comments or questions? ER, ESRI, is that a company name or an acronym for a company, or?
That's ESRI Incorporated.
ESRI Incorporated, okay. And this is the, GIS is the Global Information System for mapping.
Correct.
Will we find on the web? Okay, very good, okay. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Item number four is request for purchase, the amount of three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars to applied imaging for the purchase of four Canon M, or DR, M two sixty scanners for the Alma Public Library and staff at City Hall. Motion is support, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Item number five, request for payment amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to Alma Realty for the Alma Downtown Development Authority facade roof fire safety enhancement program for the property of one nineteen West Superior, which was damaged by a fire at one seventeen West Superior. Any comments or questions?
What, what building is that?
That's the building that houses Katie Tobias Insurance and Rogers.
Rogers.
Which, full disclosure, had to be one property that I've got an interest in, so. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I would like to abstain, please.
And just so, this is a very good use of our funds for that. That fire was started in one seventeen West Superior Street, damaged that building very significantly, and everyone, Katie's office had to move out for many months as it's finally restored back to where it started, and looking really good, there's still some really good installments. Just make her agree.
I believe the motion was carried. Thank you all. For my interest in the projects. Moving resolutions, first up is consideration of a resolution of appreciation for Commissioner Donald L. Ayers. Do we entertain a motion? Support, support. Okay, we have a motion in support. I have, we have a plaque to present, so, we do that at this time, is that correct? So, Don?
That means I lost.
I believe you and I need to.
Almost did this once before, brother.
Yes, I tried to get out of this, but you didn't, did you? Okay. Consideration of a, a resolution of appreciation for Commissioner Donald L. Ayers. Whereas Donald L. Ayers has faithfully served the Alma City Commission since January one, two thousand four, and whereas Don has played a key role in the economic and community development of Alma throughout his tenure on the Commission through such projects as the construction of Adams Avenue, Pine Avenue Extension, Panther Parkway, and Willow Run, the expansion of the Alma Public Library, construction of the Alma Dark Facility, the Fred Meyer Hartland Trail, the two-way street conversion in the Central Business District, execution of the Alma Master Plan Agreement, creation of an obsolete property rehabilitation districts, and whereas Don has supported intergovernmental, within the, intergovernmental, within the county and neighboring Pine River and Arcadia Townships and the city of St. Louis for housing and economic development projects, and whereas Don has campaigned to support the successful passage of municipal millage issues involving renewal of neighborhood street program initiatives for the years two thousand six, two thousand eleven, two thousand sixteen, the three point five million dollar Alma Public Library Expansion Project, and the enactment of over one hundred fifty ordinances, and whereas Don has carried out his fiduciary responsibilities which have resulted in the award of millions of dollars in grants and contributions for multiple projects and programs throughout the city of Alma, during his tenure at the city of Alma, reached the achievement of sufficient fund balances and operating funds to assure the continuation of municipal services during the periods of economic downturns, all of which have been accomplished through a period of uncertain municipal revenues and in the absence of any increases in the general fund operating millage, and whereas Don has also shared his personal time and professional talents through his service as a member of the Alma Planning Commission and zoning board of appeals, he has played a role in promoting the annual Highland Festival and the Come Home to Alma for the holiday celebrations. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Alma Commission, city staff, and citizens of the Alma community express their heartfelt gratitude for Donald L. Ayers contributions through his fifteen-year tenure as an elected official for the city of Alma, and further extends their wishes for his continued success as he once again becomes a private citizen following the expiration of his term on December thirty-one, two thousand eighteen, and, I like that word, be it further proclaimed that this resolution to be presented to Commissioner Donald L. Ayers at the December twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen city commission meeting, and that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of the city of Alma Commission date this twenty-seventh day of December, two thousand eighteen, and Don, I congratulate you, congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
I can't wait to hear Mel's. It sounds like I did an awful lot. Mel's been on a lot longer than me, so, but thank you again, thank you all.
You have contributed a lot.
Thanks.
It certainly is appreciated. Okay.
Well, you might as well stay there.
You might as well stay there.
I believe we have a motion on the table, we have a vote?
We did not vote.
We did not vote.
But you read it again.
And! I'm not sure I could, I'm gonna try to get you this up.
So we have a vote, yes. Consideration of a resolution of appreciation for Commissioner Mel Dagon.
For.
For that.
Lift a photo. Okay.
Bird and cats, here kids.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried, congratulations, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is a resolution.
Of appreciation.
Of appreciation for Commissioner Melvin A. Nyman. Melvin! Oh, yes, your pleasure. Your motion in support? Okay. Sorry about this.
You got, you got this great.
Okay. This is even smaller print, that isn't clear. Resolution of appreciation for Commissioner Melvin A. Nyman. Whereas Melvin A. Nyman has faithfully served the city of Alma as a city commissioner since January one, nineteen eighty-eight, and whereas Mel was selected by his fellow commissioners to represent the city as vice mayor on January two, two thousand two, and whereas Mel was selected by his fellow commissioners to represent the city of Alma as the city mayor on June one, two thousand two, with the retirement of then-mayor Burnett Davis, and whereas Melvin A. Nyman held the position of mayor for fifteen years, being the longest sitting mayor in the city of Alma history, where he performed five marriages in his position as mayor, and whereas on January ten, two thousand seventeen, Mel stepped down as mayor to be elected vice mayor, and then on January nine, two thousand eighteen, retired from the vice mayor seat to finish out the rest of his term as he started back in nineteen eighty, as he started back in nineteen eighty-eight as a city commissioner, and whereas Mel has played a key role in the economic development and community development of Alma throughout his tenure on the Commission, and whereas Mel has supported the intergovernmental relations within the county with the neighboring Pine River and Arcadia Townships and the city of St. Louis for housing and economic development projects, and whereas Mel has campaigned to support the successful pass, passage of many municipal millage issues involving the renewal of the five-year neighborhood street improvement initiatives, the three point five million dollar Alma Public Library Expansion, and enactment, enactment of two hundred ninety-four ordinances. Wow. That's a lot. Whereas Mel has carried out his fiduciary responsibilities which have resulted in the award of millions of dollars in grants and contributions for the municipal projects and programs throughout the city of Alma, during his tenure with the city of Alma, reached the achievement of sufficient fund balances and operating funds to assure the continuation of municipal services during periods of economic downturns, all of which have been accomplished through a period of uncertain municipal revenues and in the absence of any increases in the general fund operating millage, whereas Mel has also shared his personal time and professional talents through his service as a member of numerous boards and commissions, not only in the city of Alma, but the countywide as well, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Alma City Commission, city staff, and citizens of Alma, Alma community express their heartfelt gratitude for the contributions of Melvin A. Nyman throughout his thirty-one-year tenure as an elected official for the city of Alma, and further extends their wishes for his continued success as he once be, once again becomes a private citizen following the expiration of his current term on December thirty-one, two thousand eighteen, and be it therefore proclaimed that this resolution be presented to Commissioner Melvin, Melvin A. Nyman at the December twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen Alma City Commission meeting, and that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of the Alma City Commission date this twenty-seventh day of December, two thousand eighteen. Now, it has been a great pleasure. Forgot how long I was doing. Do I say words already? No. Oh kids, we're losing a lot of institutional memory here. So, stay close to your phones, guys, because we're gonna keep calling, yeah. Okay, I believe we had a motion in support on the table for Dr. Nyman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Moving down to agreements, consideration of a resolution approving the first amendment to the water tank communication site lease agreement between the city of Alma and T-Mobile Central LLC for the use of the water tower. We have a note that the original agreement was dated September eighth, two thousand nine, and the less he wishes to extend the initial term by five years convincing on January one, two thousand nineteen, and renew for five successive renewal terms of five years each, unless he guarantees to pay rent for the period of five years.
Move approval.
Motion is support, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Reports, we have two before us this evening, the Commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or a Commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote.
Support.
Motion is support, is there anybody who'd like to pull on both, two items? The two items are the Board of Review December eleventh, two thousand eighteen minutes, and second item is the Alma Planning Commission meeting minutes of December three, two thousand eighteen. So, here you go, comments or questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. New brick, new business, we have a presentation of honor awards to two police officers, Officer Stack and Officer Hawkins, so, who's gonna do the honors here? We have some volunteers coming forward.
Section five point seven point three of the Alma Police Department policy states, the Medal of Honor is awarded to a member for an extraordinary act of heroism that goes above and beyond the normal public duty and is carried out at great risk, risk to personal safety in an effort to protect persons or property. Today I have the privilege to share with you a portion of a shift worked by Officer Stack and Officer Hawkins. On July twelfth, twenty eighteen, both officers were on duty and had been working traffic when they were dispatched to the scene of a structured fire at fifteen seventy-five Pine Avenue. Officers arrived on scene and without hesitation they made entry. Ensuring that the residents of the building were evacuated, officers attempted entry into the apartment number one nineteen, where the fire was so intense, they were not able to gain access. Alma Fire Department arrived a short time later, with the scene ultimately being turned over to the Michigan State Police Fire Investigation Unit. Through the investigation, it was learned that one fatality had occurred. I can only imagine that without the expedient response from Officer Stack and Officer Hawkins, this number may have been higher. It's very difficult for us to get called out to scenes like this, so then I'll share a little piece from my perspective. When I arrived on scene, I noted the officers had made sure that the residents were out of harm's way. They remained calm and communicated with fire personnel. I watched as they resumed their duties. Officer Stack and Hawkins responded to a suicidal subject, changed the patrol car tire, and then checked on a suspicious vehicle, all prior to getting checked out themselves. You see, both officers acted selflessly. They continued to care for others, even though they felt the effects of the smoke they had taken in during the initial call. It is without hesitation and with great pride that we present both Officer Stack and Officer Hawkins with the Medal of Honor, a uniform pin, and a certificate of appreciation.
That's off stacks. Thank you.
You might be copying the law for five dollars. Okay, well, congratulations to the two officers, and our thanks to them and all of the fire and safety personnel that we can employ, we do have a couple of great teams there, so, it is appreciated. Okay. Did we receive that, or is that just? That's just a. Next up is our appropriations. One question. Any comments or questions on the list of those? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Commissioner comments? Roxanne?
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Nyman, and Don, I have truly enjoyed learning from you and kind of working with you, and I wish you the best in your retirement as a city commissioner, hope to still see you around, and thank you to Officer Stack and Officer Hawkins, and our police department.
Same to both of you guys, it has been a pleasure to be on with you, and I have learned a lot. Thank you, two police officers, thank you and the rest of the Alma Police Department and Fire Department for all you do, that's the kind of thing that makes me proud to be in Alma. One of the other things that made me very proud to be in Alma was the Come Home to Alma thing that took place, the Christmas thing, which was absolutely fantastic. It was to everybody who had involvement with setting that up. That's just a neat, neat thing to see that happening in downtown Alma, it was a wonderful, wonderful thing, happy to be here. Just a thank you to Officer Stack and Officer Hawkins, what they did is extraordinary, and it seems to go almost every day, they, our police officers and servants. Now, it's been, it's been a task to have enjoyed it, and I think the thought that came to mind a long time ago, it came to my, the people's commitment to what they do is their duty, the people's commitment to the city, kind of what I'll pay us as a kid, so, thank you.
That's it. No. I think I've had, I think I've said enough.
You certainly did enough.
Don?
I have to echo that too, from the sounds of this, I've done enough and said enough too. Congratulations to our two police officers, we got a really good group there, and I'm glad that we recognize and pour that too. Thanks.
Mark?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First, Officer Stack and Officer Hawkins, congratulations, thank you so much, and it's great for you to find out what they did after the act of heroism, it's just another day of the week for these guys. That's what they do on a day-to-day basis.
Another day in the office.
And man, we really do appreciate the heroism, it's, it's, it's incredible. And you two guys, Mel, man, it's been a pleasure. Every time there's a motion to adjourn, I keep waiting for, all in favor can get up and leave. I've been on my mind for. You're, you were tremendous, you've been just a huge asset to the city of Alma, it's been a pleasure and an honor to, to, to be involved at all with, with what you've done. Thank you so much. And Don, same, man, I mean, you represented a very important constituent, you're, you're invaluable, and, and so, we really gonna miss you. It's been, like I say, it's been a pleasure and an honor to be part of this. Both you guys have been through some pretty crazy times, and it looks to me like you've done your job so well, things, and I don't wanna be jinxed now, but things seem to be, but, really, I'm up for it. Two thousand eighteen was, was a, was a, was a big year for the city of Alma, and, and I think two thousand nineteen looks good too. Without you two guys, it would have been much, much more difficult. Thank you so much.
I, it's hard to add to anything to what everybody said, Mel, it just is amazing to me, I look at nineteen eighty-eight, and, and I, and as you've been here longer than I've even, you were on the Commission longer than I've even been here, and I think I've been here for a long time, it's, it's incredible to have a commitment of that, of that time period, and you will always be known as the man, here, that's for sure, thank you. Don, you're always the easiest person to talk to about anything we've been going through, and I appreciate that, again, your commitment level to what we're trying to do here, and through this whole transition, you've been a great help to me, thank you very much, from there. I'll tell you about Hawkins, so I slide back into another form of my life. I, I went on scene that night, I, I don't know why, maybe old habits die hard, but I got there, and he's, he's a funny guy, if you don't know that, he's a joker, he's always funny. He's funny that night, and then I found out later that he had to go get treated. I had no idea that, that that had even happened, so, thank you guys for your service and what you do. Twenty eighteen has been a roller coaster, to say the least, to you guys, staff, thank you. For getting there.
Thank you, and I certainly echo our appreciation to our officers, it is amazing, I'm constantly in awe of people that run towards danger when most of us run away, including myself, especially myself. I, I don't understand what drives that type of behavior, but I'm grateful that there are those that do, and those that will do that for us, and it's just a tremendous asset, we do appreciate their service. And speaking of service, Don, it's been great working with you over the years, I really appreciate it, we came on this Commission together, and we learned together, and I really enjoyed bouncing ideas off of you and some of my crazy thoughts, and.
It's not worked so great.
But it has been great working with you, and you, you did bring a perspective that was, you know, we all bring unique perspectives, I guess, but yours is particularly, I think, one in many ways, so. And Mel, I certainly have known you longer than we've been on the Commission together, and I've appreciated your guidance over the years, you've been a tremendous mentor to myself, and I appreciate that. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for your encouragement and your help, so, I appreciate it, I will certainly miss working on both of you gentlemen, and I hope you will take my calls when we call for various things as time progresses here. Our, our, thanks on behalf of the communities, we look forward to seeing you in this, in different roles going forward. Okay, so with that, we'll open our meeting up to public comments. If you'd like to address the Commission, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to issue your thoughts. Lori, I think you wanna be first.
My name is Lori Wolf, I'm over at five seventeen Michigan, permanent being St. Louis. I have struggled since May of this year, I have done a lot of fighting for my life. I've struggled to, at times I wondered if I'd give up, but count the days, I can see the tunnels, the light at the end of the tunnel, I have got nine more days, and I will be done with the chemo that I've gone through, the surgery I've gone through. I've had a lot of support from the Alma PD, called my brothers and sisters, they've helped me, my church family, but I've got nine more days, and I will be done with radiation. I am a cancer survivor, and if people don't understand what a cancer patient goes through, look at me, I fought for my life, and I've done a tremendous job, and I'm standing here proving to everybody that a cancer patient could fight for their life, they can get help, there is help out there for anybody that has cancer. I've done it, and I'm the proof, thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Certainly wish you continued success, good news when you treat this.
Thank you.
Who wants to be next? There's one thing I forget, I thank Eric and the committee that worked on the Come Home to Alma event, that was a great event to begin this year.
I love knowing, next week they have a meetup meeting, and all the business owners that stayed, there was a lot of business owners that participated this year, so, that really helped, yeah.
It really brought a lot of people out, so, that was funny again, so, thank you for all that. And I also almost would like to, I wanna send my thanks to, I guess, I don't know who's responsible for it, but the municipal garage, I suspect, the tree got trimmed on the corner of Fairlane and Charles, so it doesn't hit, it doesn't hit my car anymore, I turned the corner, so, whoever did it, please pass my gratitude along to whoever had the trimmer in. I don't think that was ever.
We are, we are trimming trees this winter.
That's good.
It's great, actually.
Yeah.
If it's above twenty, we're out trimming.
I, I, I see that as a symbol of many other little things that we've noticed being done, and things being done in a better and more efficient way, and, you know, I'm sensing an improved morale in the. And, you know, I'm sensing a improved morale in the staff, you know, across the board, so. It's all very encouraging. I share Tony's optimism with about 2018 as good as 2018 has been. I think Alma's gonna have a better 2018, so. We're still waiting for the next one to come to the podium. Anybody interested? Okay, hearing none. Entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Everybody have a happy new year.
Happy new year, everybody.